Welcome, and let the roll reflect. We have a forum, and all members are present. Councilmembers, are there any corrections to the minutes from the regular meeting on October 16? Okay. Comments from the audience? At this time, we will allow comments from the audience. If you wish to speak to the council at this time, you may step to the podium, state your name and your address and your comments.
Did I press any buttons? Okay. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is John Strofes. I live in Denmark Township, 14530 90th Street South in Denmark. I'm also the chairperson in Denmark, so happy to be your neighbors there. I just want to make a public comment with regard to the ag lease land this year and the fantastic new option that was presented. I did have the opportunity to read the board packet, and we were an applicant under option B, which was the new option for perennial crops. And first of all, I just would like to say thank you for adding that as an option. As I anticipated, we were the low bid for that option, and the reason is really the economics of that type of farming. We've been very involved with the Department of Agriculture, the Forever Green Program. We've testified in front of legislature twice on behalf of that. We also started a foods company, and we're one of the first hemp producers and the first hemp producer right here in Denmark back in 2016. So from a farming perspective, we're a little bit progressive, and conservation is really important to us. And I think there's a lot of benefit that can be achieved with this type of farming. And quite frankly, we need some assistance and participation to incent farmers to be able to adopt those practices because the economics of them are significantly different. So I just would like to want to give some of those thoughts as you consider that topic tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to wish to speak to the council at this time? And anyone at Zoom? No one on Zoom? All right, councilmembers, are there any items to be considered? Okay. Dan?
Not to be considered, but I would ask that item X E1 regarding the class action settlement for PFAS be pulled from the agenda tonight and bring it back in a couple of weeks on the 20th.
Okay, council? Yes, Dave?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All right, thank you. Consent agenda. Council, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Leifeld, second? Councilmember Fox, any discussion council? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye. Aye, and that motion prevails. Tonight, under warding contracts, we have the Hastings Industrial Park agricultural lease. And for this item, we have with us Community Development Director John Hinsman. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilmembers. I'm just finishing up some of the Zoom preparation here and getting to the right screen. So tonight, we have before us an agricultural lease for our industrial park. This is an item that we have done continuously for about 25 years or so. We have vacant land within the industrial park, and as it develops, we take a little more of it out. But the vacant area that we have, instead of letting it be fallow, we have some income derived off of it from leasing it out to agricultural entities. So we've had a two-year contract right now that expires at the end of the year, and we are now going forward with a three-year contract. As it was noted earlier, we did switch things up a little bit this year in how we put about the contract. Typically, we have had the contract in which we'd have a rotation between corn and soybeans, with the corn going in as a more profitable comp for the farmer and then the soybeans to help with some of the nitrates within there. We've had some concerns with nitrates in the past in the industrial park because of the drinking water service management area, which is shallow. Essentially, when water drips in, it gets to the aquifer a little bit quicker. So we've been using some best practices in that. As we went a prodigy this year, we did have an option on that. It was noted, but we termed an option A and an option B. The option Bs are typical what we bid, which is corn and soybeans. And then the option B is what was termed a low nitrogen input crop, a perennial crop or continuous living cover. What this is, is something that would have a very minimal negative aspect on nitrates within there, so it would not have the impact that it would have in other places. So understood going in here that the nitrate might develop a smaller bid because it's not as profitable as a crop that you could plant either through hay or curns or other types of things that could be grown. So I went about it and had the options that people could bid. Option results are shown on the screen here. The overall highest yield for a per acre price bid was Dave and Joe Burke at $233 an acre. And this would be under the option A. So under the option A, you can see we had the three bids within there. When you take a look at past years, we bid this out again in 2021. It's slightly higher than we had at that point. It was Burke Farms again at that time at $226.50 was the bid. The option B, we only received one bid. It was at $105 per acre here. During the time that we went forward with this, we were approached by the Dakota County Water and Soil, Dakota Water and Soil Conservation District to help us out with potential options for nitrate control on this one. And they were very instrumental in trying to get the word out here and putting together some of the information that we had within the report. Unfortunately, we just had one bid on here, and the bid was significantly lower than the other bids. It's very difficult to try to bid something or to evaluate something competitively when you have one bid and that one bid is lower than the rest of them. So I appreciate what we have done this year as far as bringing forward the bid and trying to find something that could be a low nitrogen input crop. But our recommendation this year would be to go for option A, which is to award the bid to Dave and Joe Burke at the $233 an acre, which is listed here. I do have a representative here from Dakota County Water and Soil Conservation District, Ashley Gallagher, who may want to give a little bit of an update on some of the things that they had put into research and helped us out here in making our application and putting this out to bid. So, Ashley?
Mayor and members of the council, thank you for listening to us. I think, well, yeah, I am Ashley Gallagher with Dakota County Soil and Water Conservation District. I also have Mitch Hunter.
Yep, my name is Mitch Hunter. I'm the Associate Director of the Forever Green Initiative at the University of Minnesota.
And I think John set the stage well for us and explained a bit about perennial crops. But I just wanted to say thank you to the staff of Hastings for being willing to explore this new option. It's hard to get the word out about perennial crops and the work that we need to do. And so this is one way that we can begin to get the word out there. And regardless of the decision tonight, we'll continue to do our work all throughout the DWISMA, which is the drinking water supply management area. We know that Hastings has struggled with nitrates in drinking water for quite some time, so we're trying to work with landowners all throughout the DWISMA, which is a large area to work with. And you did, we prepared a fact sheet that has the benefits of perennials. I just wanted to bring some attention to that. There are direct groundwater, drinking water benefits to switching crop rotations to perennial rotations. And we're working on, you know, turning those into economic benefits for what that could be for a farmer and for the city, too. But we do know that there is a change, at least 90% reduction on a field if you're switching from corn and soybean to a perennial crop. So those numbers are in that fact sheet for you, if you wanted to take a look at that. Also, you know, if you know folks outside of the limits of Hastings here, just getting the word out would help us implement some of these practices so that you can have fewer nitrates in drinking water in the future. So those are a few of the things I wanted to highlight. I'm not sure if Mitch wanted to highlight a few things, too.
Sure, I'll just add a couple of points. So you might not have heard of the Forever Green Initiative. We are working on developing some of these perennial and low nitrogen input crops. And I just wanted to add to what Ashley said that we were excited about this opportunity because we know that there's an issue across the DWISMA with nitrate loading in the drinking water. And we thought that it would be a great showcase for the city to use its own city-owned land to highlight what farmers can do to have a commercial crop, to protect drinking water at the same time. And that could be a place to bring folks in, offer educational opportunities, highlight connections to, in the supply chain. So we've also been working with a small company that would be willing to purchase curnsa if it were grown at this site because they believe in the mission of protecting drinking water. So we're hoping that this is something that we can continue to collaborate with City of Hastings on, obviously Dakota County, other municipalities and local governments across the state because we think it's a model that could really catalyze change and drive positive momentum on affecting or improving our drinking water quality. So that's what we were aiming to do, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Council discussion, councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I have to say that I don't agree with the staff's recommendation to award for a corn crop. And, you know, the reason being is that, you know, over the years, this is my seventh year of being on the city council, and nitrates has long been, you know, a problem here within our city. And if you look at, remember, it's not in our packet, but I remember looking at our watershed district and where nitrates is like a particular problem, and the county staff could probably address it. I remember seeing that the topography that's around the Vermillion River there, that it's like exceptionally porous. There's something special about the land in there and how the water, as it goes by with the Vermillion River, that it allows the nitrates to fall through the groundwater, I mean, through the ground at a faster rate. And then that's one of the contributing factors why we have such high nitrates within our groundwater here. And so, you know, I think that, and I know that, you know, historically, it takes government oftentimes to take the lead in environmental types of initiatives. And I think that it, I respect what the county staff are trying to do with the conservation measures and, you know, and asking the city to put it out for bid. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, like, are we surprised that the low nitrate option comes in as the least profitable at this point? No, it doesn't, and we only received one quote. And why is that, right? Because it's probably not as profitable. And just like any kind of green initiative that's out there, it's oftentimes at the beginning of the inception, when you're trying to like have a movement occur, that the most, you know, cost-effective measure isn't the green infrastructure type of initiative. And so when you look at this bid, the difference between Dave and Joe Burke's corn and soybean bid is that that comes out to be, if you take the $233 times 82 acres, that's $19,000, whereas the $100 per acre that Strofes Farms is advocating for under option B, that comes out to be $8,200. And so, I mean, when it comes to like our overall budget, I mean, that's really a drop in the buckets, in the bucket. It's an $11,000 difference in investment that our city would be making in trying to encourage an agricultural practice that may, you know, when you think about it overarching, this is a small plot of land, 82 acres, when you think about the watershed district overall. But at least it shows that the city is, you know, taking the lead in an initiative to make an investment in fostering this kind of agricultural development. And so I have to say that I disagree with the staff's recommendation to move ahead with a corn and soybean lease at this time. And I would most definitely advocate for the option B, even though there's only one bid, as I said, it's oftentimes, as these kinds of initiatives start moving ahead, there's oftentimes, you know, you have to make investments in fostering these kinds of things. So that's my sentiment at this point. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fults. Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember Fults, I would absolutely agree with you on this. Having sat here with you for seven years, it's really hard to talk about the farms around us and what's being put into the groundwater and not be doing it within the city limits, right? We have so little farmland within the city, even less farmland, that we get to make this decision on, right? This is our land. I would have to agree with Councilmember Fults in that this seems like the right time for us to make a decision that says, you know, we're not just talking the talk, right? We've got an opportunity here to do something different. And I think that's what this is. Sure, money's nice, we need money. We're a city, and it's expensive. I get that. I do like seeing in the Strofes bid here that if this does prove successful, right, and this is new to them as well, so if it does prove successful over this three-year term, they state they'd eagerly bid again under the same program, potentially at higher price. So of course, they have to be able to make money as well. So I would support, you know, a motion that would allow us to go forward with the Strofes Farms Stock Farm LLC bid. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Councilmember Pimblets?
Listening to the discussion, I would make a motion to go with option B. And thinking about the nitrates and the issues that have been in front of everybody for a number of years, I think it only behooves the city to make a step forward and move to option B. And so I would make that motion.
First motion by Councilmember Pimblets, second by Councilmember Leifeld. Additional new discussion council?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could address some of the comments that were made here tonight. A couple of things pertaining to the industrial park here. Number one, the property itself is actively marketed for development. It has been for a number of years, but we do have an entity right now that is actively marketing that property. So we hopefully will be in a situation the next couple of years in which that property will not be a farm, it will be industrial production. The amount of profit that would be yielded on this one is significant for community development. We do have the funding that we need for projects that we're doing for development. And there's projects and needs that we have this year that are unmet. So another initial $11,000 in the overall budget is not a big deal. But to the Community Development Department and the activities that we're doing, it is. From a nitrate situation here, I look at this as a demonstration project here, and I understand the best practices aspect of it. If it was a situation where it was larger or if it was more, if it was going to be something over a longer period of time, I might think differently. Also, with the bill itself, we have one bid here. It's very difficult to evaluate a bid when you only have one of them. So I understand the council's concerns and understand where the council may go on this one, but I just wanted to offer some additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Leifeld?
John, I very rarely disagree with what the staff recommends. Highly, I look to them for so many things because they are the experts in this. However, just that being said, and I understand $11,000 is a significant amount of money for the department, but looking at it, and, you know, big things start small. So I think this is, again, a spot where I would want to just, I wouldn't feel like I'm being honest with myself going forward, voting for other things if I said no to this because it was a matter of money. So I appreciate your explanation to that because I think people need to know that. So I appreciate your time and the time that the city put into it as well. So thanks, John.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Any other discussion council? There's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of that motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, we have an authorized signature to amend a contract with Miller Dunwoodie. And John, you may continue.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, city councilmembers. As you know, they've been working on this building for quite a few years here. And the building itself has not gone as expected. There's been some twists and turns as what has went on. We're very fortunate, and I'll say, the next two items are sort of related, so I'm going to kind of use this explanation for both of them. We got the $2 million grant for work within this building here, and we set about going forward and getting some of the contracts, getting some of the bids out. First thing we did is we made a contract for a general contractor to help us out in putting the bid packages together and to guide us through the process. As you know, this building is old, it's challenging, and it's very difficult to bid out and expensive. We did receive a $2 million grant from the state of Minnesota, which we will be using in part with this. And we've went out for bids on a number of different components in a number of different ways. That has led to additional work that our contractor, Miller Dunwoodie, has had for expenses. And so tonight, under the first request here, we are asking for an amendment to the contract for services with Miller Dunwoodie in the amount of $46,700. And that would be for architectural, engineering, and design services, for services that have been rendered and services that are here to come. Now, the original contract we had for them was right around $100,000, so this would be about a third larger than what we had. However, the amount of work that's gone into this with the multiple bids, the roof project, for example, has been out on bid number three right now. The revision of contracts and so forth has led to additional work. We carefully looked at this as a staff and are recommending approval of this change tonight, recognizing the work that Miller Dunwoodie has provided and the work and the leadership that they will in the future. So I can stand for any questions.
All right, thank you, John. Council discussion? Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. So there is cost savings, correct, in combining these? And so although you're asking for an additional $46,000, it does save a significant amount in the end and for...
It is, yeah, I should have explained that a little bit further, councilmember. When one of the, half of this amount, about $22,670, is going through a combination of HVAC services. Right now, we've got separate systems for City Hall, separate systems for PD. We're about 10 feet apart. So we're going to be combining those systems into one because they're both due to be done. So that is a cost savings on that, correct?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll make a motion to authorize the contract amendment for the additional services in the amount of $46,700 to the existing agricultural and engineering design with Miller Dunwoodie as staff recommends. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fults. Councilmember House, seconds? Additional new discussion council? All those in favor of the motion state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails.
Thank you.
It's John. We also have an authorization for a signature for the Renaissance Roofing for the City Hall Dome.
Thank you, Mayor, and moving on or along on the City Hall topic here, the building that we're in right now. That's, the roof project of this has been one of the most complicated issues to deal with. And we have gone out for bid on three different occasions on this. It's not been for a lack of interest. We've had, as a requirement, people to come through for walkthroughs. We've had many individual firms come forward, walk through the project, and eventually not bid on the project. That happened on two separate occasions. The follow-up information that we had with them where there were some questions on materials that they could use and other factors of construction, we tried to make those more clear in success of bids. Third time's the charm, I guess. We have one bid, which you would like to have more, but we only do have the one. That bid is in the amount of $3,294,805. It's a big number, a little larger number than frankly we expected at the beginning of this one. But the numbers that we have seen and the individuals that we've spoken to, in combination with the construction costs that have been occurring, leads us to recommend approval of this. We have done our due diligence to check out Renaissance Roofing. They have provided a lot of reconstruction projects in very similar nature to what has been done at this building here. They've worked on other types of courthouse buildings. They've come with good recommendations, and so we are recommending approval on that. Secondly, along with this, there is a bid alternate within the project itself for about $9,900, I believe, yes, $9,990. Dealing with the top of the dome, if you look at the very top of the dome here, there's a gold dome with a finial on top of it. We can do one of two things there. We can either paint that a gold color or we can gild that. The painting has about a 10- to 15-year life, the gilding has a 30-year life. Our opinion as staff is that another $9,900 for another 10 to 15 years of life is worth the cost of $9,900. So we are recommending that the build alternate is part of that as well. So I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, John. Council discussion, anyone? Councilmember Fults?
Your Honor, thank you. John, is that a recommendation with the State Historical Society to go along with the true historic nature of the original architecture and that gilding on top of the dome? Is that why it was included like that?
In part, yes, councilmember. That would be truer to the original materials used on the building as well.
Okay, you know, it just makes your stomach hurt, you know, to know that these bids have been so, much more than what was originally anticipated when we had put in our original requests to the state for aid and assistance. And we've appreciated our legislative delegation in supporting this, and the governor also supported this. And I know this is something that I've been fighting for since I've gotten on board, is making sure that we preserve our dome and do what we can, because it was a decade or more before I came on that the council had wanted to do something about this. And it was a matter of finding the funding. And so, you know, it goes to show, when you keep to kick the can, you keep kicking the can down the road, how costs escalate, right? You know, had this work been done maybe, you know, pre-COVID, right, when there was plenty of labor and things of that nature, that the costs would have been considerably less. And I know that roofing companies, when they have, when you have special projects like this or like, I've seen like water treatment plant where they didn't, you know, like contractors just don't want to touch it if there's unknown variables in that they would be, you know, assuming a risk, you know, going into it. And so I can understand why the bid came higher than anticipated just because, who knows when you start to peel back the layers of that dome, what's really, you know, behind the roofing. And so we've all been very appreciative of our staff in working hard on trying to move this forward and trying to be creative and trying to work, you know, to modify how it is that the bid was, you know, done. And so we don't take it lightly whatsoever that we're increasing the budget as it is. And I know that we're going to have to figure out financing moving forward. And so I just wanted to say thank you, you know, John, for all of your work on this and to Dan. And we know that good things will come after this, and I think that this is a legacy project that this council will walk away from, that we preserved City Hall, the council before us, did the River Renaissance. And so I think that we can be really proud of being supportive of this and the investment in our City Hall. So with that, I'll make the motion to move forward with the requested action to, where's the resolution? I'm sorry, I thought it was at the beginning, but no, it's at the end.
Yeah, it was right after the report, councilmember.
Right, is to adopt the resolution to receive bids and award the contract for the 2023 City Hall Dome Roof Project to Renaissance Roofing for the $3.2 million that they bid. Thank you. And then also to do the option of gilding the dome.
Thank you, Councilmember Fults. Councilmember Leifeld?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
A second?
Yep, but I do have a question for John.
Okay, council discussion?
Just to confirm, John, there were a couple pictures in here, and it's so awesome to be able to see the dome like that, right? You don't realize that that's what it looks like. But the, what we're referring to isn't just this portion, correct? But, the, what we're referring to isn't just this portion, correct? That we're seeing on page 134?
Sure, sure.
Can you kind of explain that, since the picture's showing just the center and the top?
Will do. The pictures in the report there show the gilding area of the dome itself, which is a part of the roof. The, the whole project is for the entire roof of City Hall. And I, I do wanna make one, one more additional comment I should have made earlier here, too, and that is to, to thank our city planner, Justin Fortney, for all the work that he's done in preparing all this information and, uh, learning about the intricacies of this building and answering questions from contractors.
Thank you, John. Councilmember, okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thank you, John. Tonight, we have an, authorized a signature for professional service agreement with WSB LLC, and Dan Matich is here to give us a update on that.
Thank you.
Our introduction.
This came about fast, it was unexpected, um, but I'm very pleased with it. We have worked with Focus Engineering, uh, had a very good relationship working with Focus for the past eight-plus years, since 2015. Um, uh, and, and in that, Ryan Stemsky has served as our city engineer in the last few years as our public works director, um, and, and just very thankful for that. There's some changes occurring at Focus, and Ryan, in his commitment to Hastings, um, proposed, uh, changing his, uh, employment relationship from Focus to another company, WSB, uh, who are proposing, uh, an agreement here tonight, uh, so that he could, uh, continue in his role as our public works director. Uh, really appreciate that commitment from Ryan. We have some important work going on, and I'm just glad and grateful that he'll be a part of it, um, whether that's, uh, PFAS seems to be a, a common discussion, but, uh, Highway 61, uh, the wastewater plant with, with the Met Council, um, uh, his leadership in the department and handling some transitions there, um, partnerships with other organizations such as Mendat in Dakota County, um, and even just some of our day-to-day projects, whether it's our, you know, our annual neighborhood project, or, uh, working on the, the hydro plant, or, you know, guiding, you know, cleaning out sto- uh, sanitary sewers. Uh, just, uh, really appreciate his expertise and, uh, essentially it comes down to his commitment to finding a way to stay with Hastings and, uh, help us with these projects. So with that, my recommendation is that we approve what's essentially a, a, just a transition contract to continue our relationship from Focus to WSB, um, uh, and keep, uh, Mr. Stemsky in, in, uh, his role as our public works director. I can take questions. Ryan's here this evening and can certainly take questions also. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Council discussion, Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, wonderful news. Love the "yes, he's still here" email that we got. That was a little concerning for many of us. Um, couple, just a quick question, I guess, looking through this is, it says it's within budget. Um, are we seeing any differences, I mean, in what the structure's gonna look like as far as pay goes between Focus and WSB? Is this...
There's no changes in the, uh, structure between WSB and, and Focus. That, that, that's staying the same. Uh, we will have some, over the next couple of years, some other discussions about how does that structure fit for the, the, the department overall. But, uh, in terms of this particular position, it, really, it's seamless.
Wonderful. Thanks, Dan. Councilmember Leifeld? Any other discussion? Councilmember Fox?
Um, I would love to make a motion to approve the professional service agreement.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Fox.
And publicly thank you, Ryan, for all of your hard work.
And a second by Councilmember House. Newer discussion, or new discussion council? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. Ryan, we're so glad you're gonna stay here. It was unanimous. How could we? We appreciate you, truly, we do, um, for all you've done and your dual position, you know, with the public works and, and Focus, but, thank you for, uh, being here. All right. Reports from city staff under community development. We have a resolution variance for a front yard setback for the ground-mounted solar Dakota County 1590 Highway 55. And John, I welcome you back.
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I think we're all aware of where the Dakota County Government Center is, but, uh, this kinda shows the location within the project of the variance request tonight. So, uh, main government building here, Highway 55, General Seaborn Drive just off the corner, and this would be the area that is proposed for the solar, uh, array. That would be constructed on the property by Dakota County. This is subject to a variance to our zoning code. The zoning code itself, when we put together our, our solar ordinance about a year ago, we had a restriction of solar arrays ground-mounted being put in the front yard of a building. Uh, the intent in that was that if you had them on home sites or other areas, we do not like to have accessory structures, buildings in front of, uh, the main home. Yeah, and so, in this situation, it would be applicable to this, to the government center. And, the variance is being requested to be within the front yard setback. We took a look at a few things when we take a look at variances. Uh, there are deviations from the, from the city code themselves, they're regulated by state statutes. Findings need to be made that the owner would suffer practical difficulties with strict compliance, and it's not just an inconvenience. Usually these mean there's something uniquely physical that's different about the land, uh, something that's unique to the property itself, not detrimental to the public welfare, and created by the code rather than any actions from the past property owners. So, that's really what we're looking at on the variance itself. And within the report, we detail the different items within granting a variance and information that was brought forward by Dakota County and our recommendation for staff itself. Uh, our recommendation on this variance is for approval. Uh, that is also the recommendation of the planning commission when they met at their meeting about a month ago. They did vote to recommend approval of the variance itself. When we take a look at the rationale for constructing the variance, uh, we, we take a look at, uh, you know, opportunities to construct the solar array in other places. Uh, we took a look at a few other things, uh, that would have frankly made the area that the solar panels would be in more visible. When we're over towards General Seaborn Drive and 55, there were some areas there that could technically meet the front yard requirement, but would be right next to General Seaborn Drive there, and would, uh, would, would be on a more prominent area of the site. When you take a look at the area over here, on the area, it's, it's a little difficult to see, but there's a grade going down from the county center, a dip here that goes back up again, trees surrounding it. Uh, it's, it's, would be a good area to place this in and, uh, would not be, be detrimental to the surrounding area itself. So, when you take a look at the arrays, they would be located something like this, uh, within that area. Uh, be landscaping requirements around there as well. This is what the racking system would look like here, as you, they are going in. There was a couple of different things we also looked at, and that was, what other opportunities might they have to put them elsewhere? Uh, could they put them on the roof? They just had a new roof on there that was not practical. Could they put them in the parking lot as a, a situation in which they'd serve more as a carport on that? The generation received out of there was, was not terribly efficient, so that was, uh, ruled out as well. So we looked at a lot of different options on this one, and looked at the intent of the front yard setback when we are applying this for the solar code. The intent of that setback is to provide something that is not gonna overtake the main structure itself and be detrimental to it. Uh, the situation that we have here with the screening of the site and the location of the site in a less prominent, lower elevation position accomplishes those means. So that's, uh, part of the rationale that we have for the recommendation of approval. We do have representatives here from, uh, the Dakota County and their contractor, if you have any questions for them. Otherwise, I can stand for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Council, any discussion?
And I should note, Mayor, excuse me, uh, six of seven are needed for the variance tonight.
Correct. Okay. Any discussion, council? Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, John, what's the lifespan of this, um, array? Usually they're, um, installed for like 20 to 25 years, and so what's the intention here? What's the length of time in which we're committing to this use?
Sure. As far as the lifespan of the solar panels, maybe the applicant or applicant's representative could, uh, address that?
Mayor Fassbender, uh, councilmembers, it's, we would anticipate 25 to 30 years. The, the manufactured production warranty of the modules themselves is 30 years. So we're kind of anticipating that. Because they're simply steel in a po- in the ground, you know, removal at the end of the lifecycle is gonna be something that could be accommodated at the, end of that natural lifecycle.
Your Honor, and what is your intentions of how it is that you're gonna maintain the grounds around the array? You know, like typically, I'm the first one to jump up and down and like be excited about solar, but this is a very prominent, um, placement and, like, potentially could be utilized for other commercial development that would be more advantageous to the city for, you know, commercial purposes and such. And so, you know, oftentimes, when you see these kinds of arrays being put in, they're being placed in agricultural areas, not, you know, like front and center within our, our primary area of commerce for the city, you know, outside of the downtown. And so I do have a little heartburn about the placement of where it's being intended. So could you speak to, you know, what the aesthetics and the maintenance of the field area around that array is gonna be?
Well, I, I believe we're gonna have it fenced in. It's gonna be, you know, um, low kind of growth materials around there. We've, I mean, we've talked about, there's different ways of using agriculture animals to kind of eat around it, goats and stuff that can come in. There's, there's different ways that we can manage it in terms of the type of vegetation that's placed in there, so it's not looking like weeds and looking unesthetic. We have worked with the Natural Resources team of Dakota County in terms of what kind of polluters that we would place in there. Um, in, in terms of the system itself, low maintenance, it's, you know, it's non-mechanical, so there's not a lot of moving parts or things there. In terms of that, the placement of the trees is to really kind of create a barrier around that far, front side that you, currently, there are a few areas where if we add some trees, it slopes down slightly as you move towards the building. So again, kind of the front row, you might possibly see, but as it moves back, it actually kind of moves away and is less intrusive. So, I think we've looked at it and found that there's not a lot of visual from the road. So I think that those are some really important things. And then I think in terms, I'll speak one thing in behalf of the county, this is offsetting 94% of the energy for the administrative center within the, that property, and that, that I believe is a big driving motivator for the size, the location for this, to be able to make that significant impact on carbon reductions, energy use reductions, and really improve the economics of operating that facility over time.
Is this a lease arrangement between your company and the, and the county, or is the county the owner of this installation?
The county will be the owner.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yes.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fults. Councilmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I can support this. I'd like to see something more regarding the, um, vegetation, the trees around it. Um, when you say there's a fence around it, it's going to look like a prison fence. It's a seven-foot fence with top bar on it, which is, so you can't climb over it. We've had a lot of climbing fences conversations around here, um, but I believe this is the one that has like the barbed wire or something on it. Is that correct? Cause it does say in your top bar.
That wasn't all right.
Cause it just says chain link fence with top bar. So the top bar is generally the angle... Sure.
Please.
Ma'am, Chair, members of the committee, my name is Todd Hoopinggard. I'm the Director of Parks, Facilities and Fleet for Dakota County. Uh, been here as long as, actually started in this building 34 years ago. Um, but no, it would just be a, uh, black chain link fence, probably vinyl coated chain link fence. It would be a top bar, but it'd be a standard round top bar. There'd be no wire or anything on top of that.
Okay.
Uh, to the point with respect to the management of the area around there, right now, you know, it's a moat area. Uh, my natural resources group and our Parks Department is very excited about looking at perennials and, uh, flowers for certain types of butterflies, birds, and looking at, uh, the potential, that the goats might be something we would take a look at. We're using them in a couple other parks right now, but usually typically only use them when we have areas we can't get to with people and machinery. Uh, they've been effective. Uh, but in this case, they're very interested in trying some new things in terms of managing that, uh, that space that's out there for natural resource purposes. Uh, but it would be, if, it's, it's hard to tell from these pictures, but if you're looking from the road, you really can't even see it because it sits down low and it angles down. That's the large swell, that's where all the water from that 80-acre site comes down through and then goes to our other property in the corner. And that's why we keep that property taller grass to slow down the, uh, the water flow down towards the Conominions or the apartments down below there. So, uh, we've been working with that area for a number of years and trying to make sure we protect, uh, their needs as well as ours.
Thank you for that explanation. That puts my mind at ease. Thank you.
And council, I did drive by, and you can hardly see anything down there. It, it's so deep that you might only be able to see the first two panels, but... Councilmember Fox?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the variance, um, as it's stated in our packet. And, um, I think just the only comment that I really have is that I think we'll have some bummed-out families because that's a great sledding hill. But, this is, maybe they can sled into the fence, but, yeah.
Just be careful if you do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Fox.
I'll second that motion.
Member Pamblel is the second? New discussion council? All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. And that motion prevails. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dakota County. Looking forward to, I mean, it could be a start for our community, too, to have more solar, and I'm excited to, to see that. Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, this is, uh, I know, if we're working through the financial level right now, we're still working through, we have to go to the county court for approval. It is, it's about a $8 million project, uh, for all the, not only the solar application there, but solar carports at the Western Service Center or the Service Center, Robert and Library, uh, finishing all LED lighting and 1.5 million square feet of office spaces. Uh, and we'll be paid back with energy savings over a 25-year period in terms of the BSG program. Uh, so it's a goal we're looking at, it's part of our energy conservation programs out there. We still have to have some more discussion with the finance, all of this, and...
Sure.
But, uh, it would be a very interesting project, and if we're successful in bringing this together and putting it in place, I believe it would be the largest producer solar that we'll ever establish in the city.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Uh, tonight, we have the Greg Low Automobile, Automobile Repair Facility at 3,000 Lightborn Court, and council, we will have an, A, a resolution for special use permit, and B, a resolution for the site plan. And John, you may give us an introduction.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. Looking at construction of a 6,000-square-foot building located here at Lightborn Court just north of 31st Street East. The property is owned by Hedra right now. Uh, there is an agreement to sell the property to Mr. Lau, uh, to facilitate construction of this property here. Before you tonight, there are two actions. One is a special use permit. Uh, because the property is owned industrial, anything that is a service establishment requires a special use permit. Now, that special use permit vote requires six of seven. When we're talking about a special use permit, we're talking about uses that would be allowed within a particular district, uh, with certain conditions added to them. Uh, we've added a couple of those within, uh, the report itself. The other would be a site plan approval, which would require just a normal, simple majority on that one. The site plan approval would be for the 6,000-square-foot building itself. So this is what the building would look like, 60 by 100, entrance off... So this is what the building would look like, sixty by a hundred, entrance off of Lightborne Court over here, some parking in the front, parking behind on this. The property itself is, is one acre in size. There would be a landscaping as part of this as well, as shown here, it meets our landscaping requirements, and this is what the building would look like here. The Planning Commission did review this at their October twenty-third meeting, did recommend approval of this on a four to zero vote. There was no one from the public that spoke for or against the, the proposal at that time, so we are recommending approval as you are shown here. We do have the applicant, Greg Lau, available tonight if you have any questions for him. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Council, discussion? Okay, we could do the motion in a, with the two resolutions. Councilmember House?
I'd like to make a motion to accept this plan as the two resolution plan together.
Thank you, councilmember House.
I'll second that.
And councilmember Lawrence? New discussion, discussion council. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Congrats. Okay, we also tonight have a resolution for a special use permit for BMMK LLC, and this is at nineteen forty-five Thirty-first Street East in the industrial park as well.
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're staying in the same neighborhood here, just going one lot to the south from where we were previously. This is at the corner of Thirty-first Street and Lightborne Court. Hedra sold this property for development about, I think, two thousand nine for construction of Red Wing Dental at that time. The property is being, being purchased by BMMK LLC, better known as Radke and Morehauser, who presently operates at Sibley Street in downtown Hastings. So they would be looking to move their, their accounting and financial services facility to this property. Special use permit is necessary to do that, similar to what we had with previous application. Any type of service industry within the industrial park does require a special use permit, so there would be no physical changes in this standpoint, they would be using the building as is, but the use of permit is required for them to operate, and that use permit does require six to seven votes from council. Planning Commission did review this on October twenty-third, voted four-zero to recommend approval of it as presented. We had no members speak at the public forum at that time, so I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Pimble?
I'd make that motion to, as presented. Thank you.
And councilmember Fox? Discussion council. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed to that motion, state by saying nay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any council announcements? Well, I have a few, and I cannot believe I've been in this building almost all day with this gentleman, and I didn't know it was John Hensman's birthday.
Hey?
Is it your birthday?
Yes, it is.
Happy birthday, John.
Yes. Best place to spend my birthday.
I literally had like six conversations with you, and I saw nothing. I felt nothing, and you didn't, you didn't say it was your birthday.
It's just another year.
Well, happy birthday. All right. Friday, this weekend is, of course, Veterans Weekend, and there's quite a few things going on. Friday, the tenth, is a salute to our veterans at the Hastings High School at ten AM. This is a program that they had before COVID, and they're bringing it back, so it's the first year they're bringing it back, so they would love for everyone to be there to support our veterans. Saturday, eleven eleven, which is actual Veterans Day, at noon, the United Heroes League will be doing the ribbon cutting for their new ice rink, and the, to let you know that the memorial will be open for observance for that day as well, there will also be a flyby, so if you see a flyby going through town, it's going out to United Heroes. So Saturday is the Veterans Day dinner, and that is five PM, a social hour, and a six PM dinner, and that is hosted by this year, the VFW Post twelve-ten, and the location for the dinner is at Second Street Depot. Sunday, eleven twelve, at one o'clock, is the River Valley Band and Two Hundred and Fourth Army Band Concert, and that is at